Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Monday night, March 17th. Welcome to City Council. Happy St. Patty's Day. I am sitting in as President Pro Tem. Our President Sands is still out, and we all wish him well. At this moment in the agenda, we're going to establish a quorum. It looks like we have all members of council present. I will be voting as well as sitting as the President Pro Tem position. Followed by a disposition of minutes. We had a special session held February 24th, 2014, and a regular session held March 3rd, 2014. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
A motion to accept the minutes. We said date.
Second.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the minutes are accepted. Thank you. The agenda then lists communications as our next topic. Are there any communications to express from council members?
Um, you have one, right? Well, I ask, I ask actually that since there's people visiting us here about one of the issues that are at the very, very end of the agenda that we under-communications for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Member Fall. I did speak briefly with the Law Director about that, and he can clarify.
I did, and thank you for bringing that to my attention ahead of time, Mr. President. Under Rule 15 of the council rules, it actually specifies the order in which we have to go to address certain issues. So in order to do that, that would, that is a proper motion. We need a motion and a second, and then, but it would require a motion to suspend the rules in order to do that. So we had, it would require six votes to do that.
Can I please motion to suspend the rules in this particular, in this particular instance? We don't want to make people sit through four pages of agenda.
So we do have a motion. Is there a second to suspend the rules of the normal order of the council meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second.
Any debate on that?
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions or debate or comments here among council members? The mayor, thank you.
In the interest of educating everybody, I would say don't suspend the rules so everybody can go through those four pages and learn how government works.
That's terrible.
But then I've sat here for many years in the audience, and I'm aware that it's an educational experience at the very least.
There was, thank you, Mayor. There was a concern that might be worthwhile mentioning, and that is, the agenda is pre-printed or is accessible on the Internet prior to the meeting, and there may be people that were expecting to show up delayed or later, knowing that the particular item that Member Fall was hoping to, to address sooner would be later on in the typical agenda. So that could be a concern if there was members of the community that were hoping to show up at a later point. I don't know if any of their council members wish to comment on this. Otherwise, we can go ahead and vote. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on the order of the meeting. All those in favor of suspension, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So, no, no opposition? Okay, so we have officially suspended the rules on the order of the meeting, and we will go ahead and jump to the announcements and other business, which is number nine on tonight's agenda, is now being bumped up. The first bullet point on number nine is to discuss the auditors' February 2014 financial reports.
I motion that we accept the auditor's financial reports.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the auditor's report. All those in...
Oh.
Sure. And it may be also internal, or I mean, how's that, is that a little better? Okay. Didn't want to bore you guys too much with the auditor's report.
It's very exciting.
We have a motion and a second to accept the auditor's report, the 2014 financial report for February. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay, the auditor's report has been accepted. Thank you. Okay, moving along to the second bullet point under announcements and other business, we have discussion about a possible liquor permit transfer. And I've also spoke with the Law Director about this, who was hoping to clarify and make a few statements for us in the benefit of communicating.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I do appreciate that. I was asked by council to try to clarify a little bit as far as the process and why we find ourselves here having this discussion at a meeting this evening. And just by way of a little bit of background, since this is an issue that does not frequently come before the council, when there is an application for a transfer of a liquor license anywhere within the city limits, the city council receives a notification from the State Division of Liquor Control. And as far as the city council has a right to request a hearing before the division on the advisability of moving forward on the transfer. Now typically, a city council would do this because they have a specific objection to a specific license. And in my time, six-plus years as Law Director, we've let several transfers go forward without a hearing, although we did request a hearing once, I want to say it was about five years ago. And so in looking at the statute, because there was some confusion as to exactly who had the authority to, can an individual member request one of these hearings, or can someone from the community? And in looking at the empowering legislation on that in the Revised Code, that's in Section 430326, it does make clear that it is the legislative authority of a city which is empowered to request this. So it's not an individual member of council, or an individual member of the community, but rather the legislative authority itself. And since council can only act as a body through a public vote, it is therefore, stems from that, that a vote would be needed to request a hearing in a particular case. So to be further clear, because some folks out there, again, since we don't deal with a lot of these, seem to have the idea that perhaps council itself has the authority of whether or not to grant one of these transfers. That is not the case. Again, council can request a hearing, but it is, that's all they have the authority to do. Now, as a practical matter, I can tell you, you know, from experience of having done this both as Law Director and occasionally when these issues would come up when I was on city council 16 years ago, that when the representative of the city goes to one of these hearings before the Division of Liquor Control, you know, the first thing that a hearing officer is going to do is turn to the representative of the city and say, "Why did you request this hearing? On what basis is the city objecting to this transfer?" So, and that, I guess, is something that I am quite frankly going to need to hear if I am to adequately represent the city at one of these hearings. I've been given some background information from some members, and I know that there is an issue that certain citizens have about the availability of alcohol in our city, or what they may perceive to be too many liquor licenses floating around out there. And to be very clear, that's an entirely legitimate, entirely valid concern for a citizen to have, but allow me to suggest to you that using that as the basis of an objection for a transfer in an individual case without more behind that is not going to be sufficient cause for the Division of Liquor Control to prevent a permit transfer in an individual case. So, you know, again, it's not a new issue. Certainly, we've been a college town for as long as we've been a town. And, you know, again, when I was on council 16 years ago, these, this exact same issue would come up, and I can remember the Law Director at the time offering a very similar sort of explanation. And some of you may remember Bill Bias when he was council president here. Whenever one of these transfer licenses would come up, would often talk about how there was a time back long before even I was on council, that the city, as a matter of practice, would object to every single license transfer that came before the city, and how the city lost every single one of those hearings, but did so out of this larger concern about the availability of alcohol, and how that was not found to be persuasive by the Division of Liquor Control at the time. So just to back up, the only decision that council needs to make here this evening is whether to request a hearing. And, but again, if they do decide, or if you do decide to request a hearing, I would, as I'm likely to be the first person that hearing officer turns to, to ask me why we requested it, then, you know, I need to have a good answer to that question, and to be perfectly honest, I'm not sure that I do right now. So that concludes, is kind of where we are procedurally, Mr. President. At this point, I think the appropriate procedure would be to allow for a motion and a second to request a hearing, and assuming that we have that motion and second to move on with a debate and a vote.
Thank the Law Director Lang.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Having heard the Law Director's description and statement, it is on our agenda, is there a motion to request a hearing on a liquor permit transfer?
I'll, I'll speak to this. It was brought to my committee last week as committee chair. Somebody asked me to put it on. As committee chair, I did. So I guess to fulfill the full discussion and to go further, then I will make, as committee chair, the motion to put it for up for debate and vote.
Thank you, Member Fall. Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Typically, again, for educational purposes, I think this is beneficial for all of us, we have a motion and a second. Now council will begin discussion or debate, and we will then, after our discussion and debate, have a moment for citizen input, and I will, at that moment, remind citizens to limit their comments. And if there's repetition in comments, then I would ask you not to repeat those comments that have already been made. So council, questions, comments?
I'll start. I feel that we need to bring this up for debate, because as a public servant, we are bound by ethical and moral obligation to be a public advocate. And we, it is true that we haven't asked for a hearing on this particular instance on other transfers, but we do announce these every week, or every time we get them. The Senate, or the legislative president does say that people have, the public have questions or concerns to contact Debbie Walker or a member of council. So people have this time. So we need, as a moral, as a, as an ethical obligation, as an elected servant, that we have an obligation to bring it forward for discussion. And to not do so would be failing in our way of being a representative of the various opinions. There's, obviously, there's some strong opinions about this. I think one thing is, is that sometimes when you live in a small town, the person who is, the business put forward that they were open, and they may be very open people, and I think that they have a great business model, small-town situations, maybe not everybody is ready to go public. And I think that that is a legitimate way of feeling for people, and as city council, that's one of our roles, is to help to represent citizens. And so I think that people have come forward and requested a hearing. So I think that we need to entertain that possibility and leave it, you know, leave it to the rest of the council. And I want to reemphasize that council does not make a decision on the issuance of the permit. I've gotten many, many letters that says, "Please issue the liquor permit." We do not issue liquor permits. It's a state. I would suggest that people who wrote us letters to send those letters forward when, you know, when the agency is reviewing this permit. So.
Thank you, Member Patterson.
Thank you. I, after reading through the Department of Commerce, their, the rules for objection, I respectfully disagree with the way you interpret things, Member Fall. I view this as, yes, we are bound to represent the citizens of Athens, and if there is an individual who has issue, or individuals, or group, or agency, or church, or playground, or school, that has an issue with this, then yes, we are bound to listen to that. But we're equally bound to listen to the eight letters of support that came from pretty esteemed bodies, such as the Chamber of Commerce, came from the Visors Bureau, that came from individuals, citizens throughout, you know, the city, and some of them probably about as far as I can imagine, being from Court Street to people, people all throughout the city. I mentioned this before, Law Director just mentioned this a minute ago, that there are, or have been a number of these that have gone through. Yes, they were announced, but there were no objections. And so therefore, in, through my lens, I look at our obligation as not only looking at someone, or an agency, or a body, or a group that's calling for a hearing, I also look at it from the other end of the spectrum, those, and have to weigh those, in terms of those who say, "This should be passed, and we should not be asking for a hearing." Couple of things I just want to mention real quickly. I feel that it's important to put out there the fact that, that it is currently a restaurant, sure, it's called Fluff Bakery, but it's still a restaurant that has sit-down service in the uptown area, and wanting to extend that service to where they're providing dinner as well. We've done that for a number of other restaurants in the city, where there's been transfers that have taken place, again, without objection. So for me, I really don't understand why, not that the objection is being made, but why city council would request a hearing after weighing, again, all of the issues surrounding this particular location. You know, when I look at it, I see, you know, a family business that has been not only environmentally and sustainably conscious, but also socially conscious, some of the things that they have donated to Big Brothers and Sisters, the Athens Foundation, the Athens Historical Society, Humane Society, Habitat for Humanity, Good Works, the Birth Circle. So again, we're talking about a restaurant that has done a lot through, from my lens, has done a lot for the city, for the uptown area, for our community in terms of making it better. I have no reason to believe that it's going to be turned into a bar, to where they're not serving food. To that said, I am openly opposed to having a hearing.
I'd like to say one thing. I think that, in my mind, requesting a hearing is, okay, I'm a policy, I'm a permit in process wonk, that a hearing is a process, and that us requesting a hearing doesn't necessarily say, "We don't like their business, we do like their business, we don't like the fact that they do this, and we do like the fact that they do this." It's not necessarily, in my mind, it's not whether we support a business in town, it's whether the process works for all citizens. And sometimes, the process is, can be painful, but sunshine and transparency and how our democracy works, and this may sound all hoity-toity, but man, when process doesn't work, people feel that it doesn't work and that government's not working. We've been asked, you know, it's just that we need to bring it up, and it's not a referendum on the business, and I don't want to have people say, "Well, they're bringing it up, so therefore council is anti-business, or anti-bar, or anti-restaurant, or anti-adult restaurant, or whatever you want to call it," like some of the rhetoric that's been going around, is that we're looking at the process, and the process has to work for all citizens, and that's an important part of the discussion.
Thank you, Member. For the comments?
I haven't spoken out on this issue yet, because I've been really conflicted, and as the most junior member of city council, feel like I'm not as familiar perhaps with the process, but I feel like I've learned a lot over the past few weeks and about this particular issue. I've, you know, talked with folks about liquor licensing, I've, you know, I came to Fluff this morning with my children during our two-hour delay. I enjoyed being able to be in an establishment where there isn't alcohol present, and I know that there are members of our community who like being able to go have a cupcake, and, you know, there's no beer or wine. That's not to say I'm anti-alcohol, I'm not anti-business, I truly support your business, but I appreciate what Member Fall has said about process, that if there are citizens who are concerned about the liquor licensing and the expansion of liquor permitting in the city, then we do have a duty to, to request a public permit. And my frustration is that there has been, you know, it seems like city council has been maligned because of the misunderstanding that we have the ability to approve these licenses, and, you know, that was evident in the closing of Jason Kopowitz's letter to the editor today in the Athens News. And it was my understanding that folks understood that we were not the folks who would be granting the permit, or the transfer of permit. But the last sentence of your letter states, "Please implore your city representatives to approve our liquor license, or better yet, come to city council." And I think it's wonderful, you know, to bring folks out and, and to have letters written, but again, it's a little misplaced, because we're not the ones granting the license, we're not the ones granting the transfer of license. And so that, it's important to me that we understand how things work, and so I also appreciate Law Director Lang's clarification about the process and how things work.
Thank you. Further comments? Member Nys?
I too appreciate the clarification that, you know, makes it clear to us tonight that council is the one that can request a hearing, and no other body can do that. And I appreciate the many letters that have come in and support, and as some other council members have indicated, this is no, the request for a hearing doesn't necessarily us making a statement of whether the business is a worthy one, of whether you deal with other local businesses, of whether you make contributions to other local organizations. It's about the allowing a license for another place to distribute alcohol in an area of uptown that is densely populated. And our national high-risk drinking average for students at Ohio University is higher than the national average, and if we put one more place in that densely populated area, that that becomes yet another risk. So these are some of the things we're weighing. It's not an easy, believe me, none of the council members have had an easy time weighing all of these issues and considering them. So we're here tonight to listen to other comments that people may have, concerns that they may have about this, that will help us clarify a final vote on this.
Thank you. Further comments from council?
Well, I agree with everything I've heard here tonight. Personally, I, I have no objection to another bar up on Court Street. Restaurant, bar, whatever it is that's serving alcohol, I don't care. I really don't. What I do care about is the due process, and that's what, for me, is the overriding issue here. It's not alcohol, I'm not on a temperance wagon. What I'm after is that the due process that we are bound to do is done, and that's it. It's very simple for me. It's due process being done. If no one from the community had come forward and said, "I have an objection," I would have no objection. But someone did. Now that triggers due process. We have to require or ask for a hearing. Now whether or not we'll get one or not, I don't know. It's up to state liquor control people. Maybe they'll give us one, maybe they won't. And if they do, I don't know what's going to come out of it. But I do know one thing, there's been a lot of times in this community where citizens were demanding from the state that they have a public hearing, and particularly the injection well controversy in 2012. People were saying, "We want a public hearing, we want to testify, we have issues, we have concerns." And they were denied that. They were circumvented, instead of getting a public hearing, what they got out at ODNR was a nice meet and greet and hors d'oeuvres. Those people were outraged. I know, I was one of them. You know, we wanted to talk, we wanted to give testimony, weren't allowed to do that. And I think that's the same case we have here. Only in this case, it's not a huge oil company influencing government, it's, it's local people, you know, it's people in our community, our citizens, our voters. And they have friends, and they want their friends who have a business to get it going. But either due process works for everything, everybody, or it doesn't. So either we can say, "Well, we're going to have due process in this case because we object to it," or we don't, because we like these people. We can't do that. It's got to be, you know, the balances of justice have to be equal. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Well, I'll comment briefly on this as well. I know that Member Patterson and the mayor also wanted to share a few thoughts. My take on it, as a representative of the First Ward, is to share publicly that I have not received any emails or letters in opposition of the transfer. So at the moment, my stance is to not support this request for a hearing, so similar to Member Patterson's take on it at the moment. I've received numerous letters supporting moving forward and allowing the transfer to take place, and when I listen to what's been shared from the Law Director as well, I don't feel at the moment that we have enough critique or opposition to arm him if that would be necessary at the hearings. So having said that, that's where I'm standing at the moment. Member Patterson and the mayor?
I would just like to say one last thing, is I've read through the Department of Commerce Liquor Control, again, the rules of engagement for objecting, and I, you know, there's, who can file objections, there's two, local legislative authority and then public institutions. And then there's a reference to citizens, concerned citizens. Citizens cannot file objections directly, understood, but they can make their own concerns known to local legislative authorities and ask that they object and request that there are hearing. And therefore, my interpretation of this is, is I don't object, you know. The hearing is one thing, I suppose, but for me to openly say, "I object," kind of flies in the face of what is fair due process. I mean, that's what we're debating here. Do we object, and we're asking for a hearing? If I read this correctly, and I believe I do, I'm looking at it in black and white.
But as a representative of your constituents, I think that's what, the interpretation you can also read into that, is that I may not, I may object, or I may not object personally, but I represent certain constituents, you know, and some constituents have come forward and said, "I object," and some constituents have come forward and say, you know, "Let's go for it," and you have to balance that with the, the cost of having a hearing for the businesses, the cost of not having a hearing for due process, and for those citizens. So it's not necessarily whether personally, as a council, we object or not, it's whether you can, you know, and part of it is whether, it's hard to, you can't base whether you come forward with an objection saying, "Oh, well, it's not going to work, the state will reject it," because state government changes all the time, and who knows? Maybe they, they realize that Athens is all of a sudden over quota, and they want to start pulling back and taking some of those, you know, not giving transfers because they're going to give it to Nelsonville. I mean, they can change the quotas, and that's, but that's the state, that's their, their, you know, you can't sit there and say, "Well, we're not going to object because it's no good." You know, I think that's one thing, that's a defeatist thing, and that's not serving the citizens, all the citizens of Athens right. You know, I think that we have to be able to have due process, represent as best as we can the people who've come forward for, for, you know, support and concerns, and so.
Thank you, Member Fall. Mayor Wild? I'm sorry.
I just want to add that I, I have not received any complaints or concerns from constituents, and so I won't be supporting a motion at this point either.
Any other comments from council? This is also one of the rare instances in which the mayor is not permitted to...
Just if I could just clarify on that as to the issue you were raising, this is a motion to council, and since it's the legislative authority who is to weigh in, so it's not as if this is, this is not an ordinance that's being passed, that would be subject to veto, this is just getting a sense of, is there a majority of council that supports this motion?
So there's no opportunity for the mayor to veto, correct?
No.
Yeah, there's nothing to veto, it's just a council motion.
Right. Thank you. Mayor Wild?
I would point out that if everybody was interested in process, you suspended the rules early on in this evening. So just remember that. I also have the two-pager thing of how to object, and you're right, it covers legislative bodies, which is you guys right there, local legislative authority, or public institutions within 500-foot radius, churches, schools, libraries. It also talks about how concerned citizens can't really do it on their own, they have to go through you. The proceedings are also listed, how there will have to be a hearing, either... The proceedings are also listed, how there will have to be a hearing either here or the county seat, or the permit holder. Objector must appear, must appear for objection to be considered. The hearing must be public. Citizens may attend. They cannot present evidence or provide testimony unless it's designated to do so by the objector or the permit holder slash applicant. Also, the evidence has to be reliable, probative, I guess, irrelevant evidence that tends to prove the issue in question. And I don't know if we're going to hear that tonight. And I just mentioned that in passing. Some examples, statutory basis, basis for sustained objection. Examples: conviction of crime relating to the ability to operate a liquor license, applicants' unfavorable enforcement records or operation, disregard for law, local establishment substantially adversely interfering with public decency, sobriety, peace, and good order of neighborhood. Let's see, saturation of the neighborhood in such a permitted pride would be detrimental to and substantially interfere with the moral, safety, and welfare of the public. Yeah, it's a nice little one-pager there. And as far as the process, I have been sitting here since like '94. I think there's only been about three or four of these that have come through. They have always pretty much, as a hearing, not stopped a liquor license. I, I understand the process is, it's always good to unwind it, see if it still works. You know, the gears work and they're not rusty. But again, you know, what law director who's going to have to actually go in front of the, you know, for this hearing, will want some good arguments. I've yet to hear any. I suspect I will not hear many from the audience tonight. So just, I just mentioned that in passing. Again, we suspended rules, so we can just turn everything around right now anyway.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes?
Any other comments before we open it up to the citizens? Any other comments from council? Okay, I also want to remind people too, I should have done this earlier in the evening, please turn off your cell phones or put them on quiet or vibrate mode. And those that are interested in speaking, we do have a timer here. You'll be limited to three minutes to share your thoughts. And then if, if you're an audience member and you've already heard someone share a comment that is similar to yours, please do not repeat that comment or do not use up valuable time, energy. So is there public comments or interest? Please step up to the podium and do so. In support or opposition?
I am John Goodencet. I'm the owner of Avalanche Pizza. And known Jessica and, what's his name, for a while. And they're great people. And they, they shop local, they do local. And it really is, you know, I know you have to go through the hoops and everything like that, but it really is about personality of this town, you know? Local restaurants are really hard. It's hard to make, I mean, even 10% sometimes of your, your sales to walk home with that. You've got insurance, you have workers' compensation, et cetera, et cetera. And shopping local and donating like they do is, takes even more out of that. So I totally support them. You guys are great. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Angie Starline. I'm Jessica's sister, as well as the owner of Starline Organics. We are a sustainable local grain-growing operation. And many people don't know the grain system outside of commodity grain-growing. And it's not easy to sell grains in the local market even at a reasonable or competitive price compared to the commodity market. Matt and I are one of the only small grain growers in the area. And I think people don't realize too, for community wealth and local jobs, we grow, for example, grains for flour as well as alcohol. Alcohol is, or grains are used to make alcohol. And a lot of the distillers and brewers in the area are supportive of our business in that nature as well. So we do have the flour in the cupcakes that, you know, some of you guys, you and your children eat. But we also have grains that are involved in the alcohol process. So alcohol can be viewed not so negatively. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie, if I may, can I encourage you to sign in? It's something I forgot to mention.
Of course.
And John as well, if you're able to jump back up there and sign in. So if you're going to comment, please sign in. Further comments for or against?
Yes, I'm Peter Huff in Pinter, and I don't live downtown. I live on Columbia Avenue, 108. It seems as you look at the objections and the pros, it seems that the greater good is done if you let this go forward. You do not have the hearing. Let this go forward. It'll provide another place in town to eat, to have dinner, maybe have a drink with it. The concern, there are already 13 bars or so along Court, Court Street. One more is not going to do any, any extra to the students. Bronies is there, everybody else is there, they can go there. This will provide a nice venue for, a little bit extra also for people coming to town, another place for them to eat a little bit and have a drink. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the owner of Class A Sounds. We're celebrating 11 years this month. I'm an OU alum, just like the owners of Fluff Bakery and many other local business owner here in Athens who chose to stay in Athens to start a business. You know, and I, I keep hearing the debate of another bar or bar, but it seemed like people are thinking that this is going to be a bar. This is a restaurant. I never hear anyone refers to Applebee's or Ruby Tuesday's as a bar. It's a restaurant. It's fine dining restaurant, if you want to refer to that. But it is a restaurant. So, you know, this is, this is more than just about a bar. This is about a couple who chose Athens to, to start a career, to start their life, start their livelihood. And, you know, this is an obstacle that I know where they would get over, but, you know, we, as a city, a small city, a community, need to support small business. It just seemed like anytime small business tried to grow in this area, it's always roadblocks. You know, and I've sat on many boards, a lot of nonprofits, a lot of for-profits, and it's just every day it seemed like it's a different hump for a small business to make it here in Athens. You know, and a lot of people, their kids go to Athens High School, they go to high university, they graduate with no jobs in Athens. So they're forced to leave Athens. These two came back here to start a business. I met them when they got here. So, you know, this is, this is a thing that I want the city council to remember. People are trying to make a life here. They're trying to raise a family here. If they're trying to, you know, have these obstacles, believe me, Columbus is giving money out every day for small business to start. But they chose Athens, Ohio. So us as a community need to support small businesses, stop throwing roadblocks in front of small businesses. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public?
I'm going to throw them a trip when I walk up here. My name is Jessica Kopowitz. I'm co-owner of Fluff Bakery and catering at Rickshaw Thai. I wanted to point out, I did just a little bit of research on binge drinking, and I wanted to point out an article that I read today. And this is actually from the university's website. "University launches campaign to counter misconceptions about drinking." And this is from Athens. "The Ohio University Coalition Advocating Responsible Drinking Decisions Will Announce a New Campaign During Halftime of the Bobcats Game." And I don't have a date on this article. But it says, "The campaign, called 'Correcting Misperceptions,' focuses on changing campus and community members' views about the prevalence of alcohol consumption among students. Coalition members say high-risk drinking, having five or more drinks in a sitting, isn't as widespread as students think. Many people are influenced by what they think other people are doing," said Stephanie Dugan, Assistant Director of Health, Education, and Wellness. "If students think, if students think everyone is drinking a lot, then they may be more likely to follow that behavior." The article goes on, I can provide copies to you, but it just talks about the actual realities versus what we think or perceive. And I know Chris Nysley has spoken very eloquently about what she's worked on, and I know Jason and I can both say we completely respect that, and we also are not in any way for binge drinking and what that does to people and families. So, and just a little note from myself, I wrote a little speech here, hopefully it's under two minutes. Responsibility, accountability. We as concerned and responsible citizens demand this from our business and political leaders. Jason and I opened Fluff in 2010 with the last of our savings and a vision. A vision of building a value-added business for the Athens community. We wanted to highlight the bounty of our local farmers, and more specifically, Starline Organics, who you've met just now, and that's a full-service organic farm. I wasn't going to be a farmer. Needless to say, I fell back into creating a business that highlights my love of food and everything sweet. I also fell back in love with the bakery business, something I've had my hand in since I was in high school. I began my working career at Abors Bakery in New Philadelphia, where my grandpa and his friends would gather each morning for their coffee. I would get 25 cent tips. I also got my first internship in a worldwide marketing department for Diebold from those same relationships. So from that point on, it, it really helps me understand how important it is to build relationships and how important it is to be part of your community. So I started to see how, you know, how much that would affect who I was as a person. So now my livelihood and my business are built on this trust and support of my customers. This is a lesson I've never forgotten. I must provide good, if not amazing, products and services to my customers every day. I'm evaluated every day on the quality and value of my product and service, and I must deliver if I want my business to survive. If I want to provide for my family, for my employees, who there's many of them there, we now have about 20, I do not take this lightly. I never had the luxury of taking a day off where I don't think about my business. Not that I don't love that. I strategize every day. This has been over-consuming in the past two weeks. I'm lucky to have this, and it's, it's a process that, you know, we've started and we're starting to see paid off with the response that people have given. And needless to say, I hope that the letters that came through really did focus on the fact that they did understand that you guys have to go through a process, but the, the asking was for, to, to not ask for a hearing, understanding the, the legal costs and the time costs. You know, I thought about providing you with lots of economic development facts or binge drinking statistics, and where the problems really lie. But when, when it comes down to it, Fluff will be evaluated not by you alone, but by our customers and whether or not we are running our business right. The letters we've received and the people here tonight should help prove to you we're a very meaningful part of this community, not me.
Go ahead and wrap up.
Okay. Lastly, we've just been really overwhelmed and overjoyed by the support of every corner of our community and constituency. And beyond all else, no matter what happens here tonight, the whole purpose of doing what I do is not to disappoint my family and my father. And I will continue to run my business right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jason Kopowitz. I'm Jessica's husband. Just wanted to clear up a couple things. First of all, I apologize for maybe having a misleading comment in the, in my letter to the editor. You know, what I was basically asking for citizens to ask of council is to look at us the same way that, you know, maybe a Zoe, or a Salam, or some of these other businesses that do have a liquor license. We've actually put three extra liquor licenses onto Court Street in addition to the ones that have a right to be on Court Street. We did so, and I don't know about the formalities about how they could be objected to or whatever, but the, the reality is that some people with power in the city made a conscious decision to put three extra licenses on Court Street, and I don't think it's because they wanted drinking problems to occur. I think it's because they used the ability of reason to say, Salam and Zoe are places where adults in this town can go have a drink with their dinner, and it's not causing a problem. Saturday night, Jess and I finished at Rickshaw. We worked our butts off and decided, well, one of the only places in town we can go get a bite to eat at 11:30 at night is Casa. So we went to Casa. And anybody that was uptown on Saturday knows that it was practically Halloween uptown. But we were in Casa, and it was like a port storm. We were sitting there, we enjoyed a drink, we had a quesadilla, and we looked out across the street, and it was madness. And it was probably from the house parties that were on Mill Street. Can't prove that, but that's where I think the problems occur. But the reality was, it was like being in a port in a storm. We enjoyed our, our dinner in an, you know, an adult atmosphere and went home. And that's all we're trying to do, even though we're not planning on being open that late. But I would just also add that, you know, my vision for what Fluff can be, at no time, I, I always want a five-year-old kid to be able to smash a cupcake in her face on her birthday, even if it's at 9:30 at night. That's the vision that we have. We want to stay family-friendly anytime we're open. And again, as Jessica mentioned, thanks to the community for your support, and thanks for those on city council that were willing to talk to me. You know who you are, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? There's no further comments? I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Law Director Lang.
Okay, sure. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure everyone that wanted to speak had an opportunity to, to do so there. I just wanted to clarify, just as a matter of process, just a couple of the things that I had heard. The mayor brought up an excellent point, which I had, I had neglected to mention, which was just that at this hearing, well, first off, if council requests the hearing, it will happen. So the Department, the Division of Liquor Control does not have any sort of leeway there to, to not grant us a hearing. If we request it, we're entitled to have one. But the mayor raised an interesting, an important point, which was that it's, it's not a, a public hearing. It's not as if members of the community are given an opportunity to come forward and, you know, to, to voice their objection. It is the city's objection. So it would be myself, or whoever would be the representative of the city, who would be asked to, because, who would be asked to, to state the basis of the objection, since the statute says that it's, it's the, not, not just the legislative authority, but that it shall be provided for city officials to have the opportunity to, to object. So any other officials of the city would also have that opportunity, but just wanted to clarify that it would not be a situation where just members of the community would be able to come forward and, and offer their objections. I thank the mayor for pointing out that, that very important point that I had forgotten to make. And then just also, just to clarify again, that, you know, the, the decision is the council's to request this. However, there's no, I, I don't, I want to disabuse anyone of the notion that there's any requirement to that, that the city requests a hearing because someone had asked them to do so. Certainly there, the council's right to make that request, but there's certainly no legal obligation on the part of the council to follow through with that request. So I, I think that clears up all of the, the points that I had there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Law Director Lang. Okay. We do have a motion, and we do have a second. At this moment, so for clarification, since there are some interesting words here, I will, I will comment and, and make the motion this way. We have a motion to accept or to request a hearing on a liquor permit transfer. So I will first ask for those to raise their hands that support this request for hearing on a liquor license permit transfer. So all those in favor of the request for a hearing on a liquor permit, please say "aye" by raising your hands. So we have two. Those opposed, please raise your hands. So if we count correctly, it appears the opposition. And we have one, I'm sorry, and we have one abstention. Thank you, Member Pappy for clarifying. So no, no request is needed. Correct? Many of you came specifically for this particular moment in the agenda, and I may pause and potentially even ask us to go off air for a second to allow them, people who want to leave or vacate, if that's appropriate or okay, then we'll do that. We'll pause for one or two minutes here, and those that are interested in leaving now, you may do so. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We had a brief intermission there, and we will be moving forward. We are still on number nine of the agenda. We did have a sus- We did have a suspension of our rules in the normal order. So, under announcements and other business, we took care of the announcements and some of the business, but I'm asking right now if there are any, if there's any committees that need to be scheduled for next week or any other communications.
I have an announcement to make.
Announcement, thank you.
We have Athens Beautification Day coming up in April, which is something that I think we can all get behind. It's a great event that happens every spring, and it's a wonderful way that the campus and community work together in making Athens cleaner. So, I would invite everyone who's interested to go online. I can't give you the URL, but if you just look on Facebook or at Eventbrite.com, and I believe we have the link up on the city's webpage at this point as well. So, please register and come out. My family will be picking up trash along the bikeway near the community center, so come join us.
Thank you. Committees that need to be meeting or other announcements?
Sure, Member Patterson. Just to remind everyone that tomorrow evening at the community center is the Disabilities Awareness Festival, or Disabilities Festival. My belief, if I'm not mistaken, it's from 6:00 to 8:30 tomorrow evening.
I think that's.
Mayor?
I believe that's the time.
That's tomorrow evening.
Thank you. And committees that might need to meet?
Transportation.
Thank you. Member Pappy, transportation?
Finance and personnel.
Thank you.
Safety and service.
Safety services. Mayor, you'd?
Just as long as finance personnel are there.
Okay. All right, wonderful. If there's no other announcements or other business, we'll jump back to reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wild, do you have any reports or communications?
Oh, let's see, what were we thinking of? Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody who came out for the tag graffiti cleaning. I know some of the city council members showed up and cleaned up the graffiti all over the city. Thank you. And I thank you for the various organizations that did it. I heard it was a great time and lots of contributions with some of the businesses, actually, I believe. I know, I think we budgeted about money for food and drinks, and I think, was it, Goldsberry BP came through with some drinks, and I believe Lucky's with pizzas, that's what I was told. Talking to Dave Williams, he was very impressed, and it was a good accomplishment. So, thank you for everybody who did that, who actually participated in that. I also received Friday a notice from State Representative Debbie Phillips. She's having a series of roundtable hearings, I guess mostly meet and greets, and the next one for this area will be Athens County at the Public Library, Friday, the 21st, at 9:30 a.m. So, I just want to let that, people know about that. Let's see, two other things. One is that we won an honorable mention from the American Council of Engineering Companies for our Oxbow Bridge, basically Jones &amp; Stuckey L.T.D. for the rehabilitation of the Richland Avenue Bridge. I guess they liked the fact that we did it as a period piece, so we actually got that. We're competing, of course, nationwide. Last, of course, and I'd like to bring this up at the committees, that you'll have, I finance personnel, in May, there's going to be a re-up of the Issue One money, Public Works money, will be in the primary, and I would like to, I would request City Council to put a resolution for, in support of that. This is the money that goes towards the Public Works activity. We regularly go and get in the queue for that, so usually around $400,000 for the various projects, everything from carpenter's street to Lancaster, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's a 10-year bond that they float every 10 years, obviously, and I'll give you some information on it at the end of the meeting, so you can work on it and study it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been reminded to acknowledge that we need to speak into our mics a little bit better, that they're not hearing us in the audience and/or across technological TV land, so assert yourself into your mic here. Law Director Lang, anything you'd like to comment on?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I have.
Yes.
I have one.
Thank you.
One report. I don't know if you guys read the response from one of the people we sent our resolution concerning severance tax. Basically, it said, "No worries," and that, you know, if we do any, the legislature took the severance tax that the governor had put in his budget, his biennial budget update, and took it out. So, I am not sure that there'll be any severance tax changes in the near future, and that was okay by this particular legislature, and the basic gist of it was, "We don't need any severance tax. Everything is A-OK, and we have everything under control." So.
Thank you, Member Fall.
It's heartwarming.
Heartwarming.
Thank you.
Once again.
If there are any other communications, and I don't see any elected officials. So, we're moving on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 0714, an ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to Douglas &amp; Dolores Addy, 91 South May Avenue, for use of the right-of-way for an existing fence, and this was introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 0714.
Second.
This has gone through three readings per process, the process won't cure tonight, and it's basically a renewal for a fence that is existing. The renewal will be for 10 years.
Thank you, Member Fall. So, we do have a motion on the floor and a second for ordinance 0714. All those in favor of accepting this ordinance, please say "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 0814, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Paul F. Carey, 147 Columbus Road, for use of the city right-of-way for an existing sign. This, too, is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 0814.
Second.
Once again, it's a revocable license. This is granting of a new revocable license, however, the sign has been there for quite a while. This comes about from some of the work that was done on Columbus Road this summer, and they did some new aligning, and they also did surveying. People realized that this sign was in the right-of-way, so they wanted to get the paperwork in and get everything up to the legal requirements of our code, so.
Thank you, Member Fall. We have a motion and a second for ordinance 0814. All those in favor of accepting, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 0914, an ordinance authorizing an extension of the current contract with the Athens-Hawking County Recycling Centers, Inc., and ancillary services, as authorized by ordinance 7712, introduced by all council members. Who is wishing to speak on this tonight?
I can take this, Mr. President. I move that we adopt ordinance 9-14.
Second.
Thank you. Again, this is a one-year extension, where the extension will terminate in July of 2015 to extend the contract with the Athens-Hawking County Recycling.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 1114, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for a community development block grant for calendar year 2015, which is federal fiscal year 2014, and this is introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend ordinance 1114.
Second.
And the purpose of the amendment being to add a section to the ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion to amend and a second. Any comments on amending?
That's a point of order. If we amend it, does this not go back to first reading?
Well.
Correct.
Okay. So, we have a motion to amend and a second. All those in favor of amending, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is amended.
And I can give an explanation for this. What we're adding is Section 2 to this, and what it does is it authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Hawking-Athens Perry Community Action Program to administer the grant during the fiscal year. So, it's an administrative text that we're needing to have in the ordinance.
And we discussed that last week, I believe.
Correct.
Thank you. So, is there a wish or desire to proceed, or do we need to?
I forget the deadlines for these things. I think we have time.
We have time.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances for second reading, beginning with ordinance 1314, an ordinance levying assessments for street improvements in the University Estates area of the city and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules for ordinance 1314.
Second.
The purpose for this suspension being so that we can facilitate settlement of the assessment amounts.
Thank you. We have a suspension request and a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules for ordinance 1314, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The rules of council.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 1314.
Second.
And this particular ordinance is for the street improvements, which were completed in the University Estates area. That included portions of the road, as well as portions of the sidewalks that were, in part, badly in need of repair over the past several years. And the city moved to go ahead and make the improvements, a portion of that that the city paid itself. Sidewalk portion by linear foot, then, is assessed to the property owners through our process through the city.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the ordinance, which has been suspended. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 1414, an ordinance levying special assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the Columbus Road-North Lancaster Street infrastructure project and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend ordinance 1414.
Second.
The purpose for the suspension also on this, these assessment processes being to facilitate settlement of the assessment fees.
Thank you. We have a request to suspend the rules and a motion, the second to suspend them. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 1414.
Second.
And this is, once again, one of the coordinated improvement projects that the city completed this past fall. We did portions of water lines, sewer lines, curb, and then also street paving, and the portion of the city, or the city sidewalks, then were assessed to property owners in that region, and we now have the final bills on that, so we're ready to proceed.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1414. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 1514, an ordinance amending ordinance 147-13, non-union personnel fringe benefit package, Section 21(c), compensation, authorizing the Service Safety Director to hire a new fire chief at a rate of pay above the allowed 25% minimum, provided in pay range 8, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules for ordinance 1514.
Second.
The purpose of this being that we, the city has, in fact, hired the fire chief.
He's working.
As of several weeks ago, and has been working, and we need to facilitate this so that we can pay him at the appropriate rate.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspension, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Opposition, the rules are under suspension.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 1514.
Second.
And this is a particular authorization to be able for the Service Safety Director of our city to hire the new fire chief, and the reason that it's coming through council is that the pay, and that which was reviewed by the Auditor's Office and our Human Resources Office, ended up being at an amount that was 25% above the minimum in that particular pay range.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept this ordinance, 1514. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 1714, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and declaring an emergency, introduced by all council members. Who wishes to speak this evening on this ordinance?
I, okay.
Rock, paper, scissors.
We don't. Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for ordinance 1714. The reason being that we do have workshop training that is coming up, that is provided, the authorization for which is provided in this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Member Nysley. Any discussion on suspension? We have requests for suspension and a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the rules are under suspension.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 1714.
Second.
And this particular ordinance is a settlement agreement that the city of Athens has reached with the Environmental Protection Agency. You may, council members have discussed this at a previous committee meeting, in which Councilmember Patterson detailed, I believe we had a situation with brine that needed to be diluted, and that we've worked out a settlement with the EPA, that what we'll be doing is a series of workshops, and then also a hazardous waste collection day as part of the settlement agreement, and those workshops, I believe, for the city employees are fast approaching.
I can elaborate on it just a little bit, if you like.
Yes, Law Director, thank you.
So, yeah, as part of the settlement here, just by way of background, as Member Nysley said, there was a situation a couple of years ago at the wastewater treatment plan involving improper disposal, which the EPA was investigated that and found that that did, in fact, occur. So, what this actually is, the legal term for what we're adopting here, is called a supplemental environmental project, or SEP, which what that does is, in lieu of being fined, which would be the traditional way to remedy a violation such as this, would be just to have the city write a large check to the EPA. They've given us the option of undertaking some environmental projects here within the city, and so we've got the training, and we've got, well, that was the main one, was the training that we're going to put on, and so that way, the city and the taxpayers have something to show for the money that they'll be expending, as opposed to just having it be a fine situation, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Law Director. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1714. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 1814, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase a replacement trackhoe for the Public Works Department, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy. And it is on second reading, so there's no need for suspension. Ordinance 1914, an ordinance authorizing. Ordinance 1914, an ordinance authorizing right-of-way acquisition, construction, and construction engineering of the Richland South Project, number 244, and declaring an emergency. This too is introduced by Councilmember Pappy. No comments, sir. Moving on to ordinances for first reading, ordinance 2014, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency, for a community development block grant, CDBG, Critical Infrastructure Program, for calendar year 2015, federal fiscal year 2014, and designating Hawking-Athens Perry Community Action Programs, HAPCAP, as the CDBG contract administrator. This is introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Glenn Crippen from Community Action spoke with council members last week in committee meeting. We have an opportunity to apply for this Critical Infrastructure Grant Program. It has a ceiling of $300,000. And we may apply for it. HAPCAP has administered several of our grant programs, and they urged us to consider this also as a project. And I believe that our particular project for the city is the Depot Street Lift Station that serves a good section, a large section of the city, and is in need of reconstruction, probably, through this grant program.
Thank you.
Can you describe what a lift station is, for people who don't know?
As I understand, it provides the power for our system, and I believe it's primarily for sewage, wastewater, and sewage treatment. And we have lift stations in various sections of the city. So what this does is it pumps it to the right place, so it can get processed at our wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Mayor Wile.
This particular lift station covers the west side and parts of the south side. And again, it is, it's fairly old. We still have to have a series of public hearings. And really, this is, the other part of the grant, of course, is the CDBG one, where we're reestablishing, re-upping that for one year. The other entities, I think Greg Andrews spoke as well to the desire of the state to pool all our CDBG programs together, CHIP programs together, including the Nelsonville, Athens County, and the City of Athens. So there's actually two tandem grants being put together here. The lift station itself, as I say, this will, I think it's, I forget the match. I think it's a 25-75 match, I forget exactly, but this will hopefully augment our cost of replacing this lift station. And it is critical, so it falls into that critical realm of infrastructure. Because if it stops working, we'll know about it.
Well, and the hospitals there, too.
The hospital's part of it as well, yes. They would not like the sewage backing up there.
Ordinance 2114, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership with the Athens County Commissioners and the City of Nelsonville for submission of applications to the Office of Community Development, Ohio Development Services Agency, ODSA, for the fiscal year 2014 Community Housing Improvement Program, CHIP grant, and designating Hawking-Athens Perry Community Action Programs, HAPCAP, as the CHIP grant contract administrator. This too is introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, last week, we had a guest presenter to city council committee meetings, and this was Mr. Greg Andrews, who told us briefly about the state agency that offers these programs, and saying that this is a trend for what they call bundling grants together, where several applying organizations, in this case, they are communities, so it would be the City of Nelsonville, the Athens County Commissioners, and ourselves. The Athens County Commissioners would probably be the grantee, I think was the suggestion in this particular case. The advantage of going for this program is, this is the trend of where the funding is going, so we want to be smart about applying for the grant money whenever we can, and this also will allow us to apply for a larger pool of money through the program.
Mayor Wile.
I apologize for conflating them. The fact is that they, both they administrate the same organization. Again, we are going to be bundled, as you say. The incentive, of course, is that each of the entities will actually have an additional $50,000 into the pool that they can pull from. The, I think, I forget which, who gets what in one sense, but at the same time, we'll have to put together a housing advisory commission. There will be a series of public hearings as well. We'll probably have to hold one on our own, so we know what our needs are in the future. I think it's good that we work this out, because there, it's a regional need for housing in general.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Member Nysley. Ordinance 2214, an ordinance amending the 2014 appropriation ordinance. This is introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules for ordinance 2214.
Second.
The purpose for the suspension being that we do have several immediate costs that need to be paid, most importantly, our property taxes.
Thank you. We have a request to suspend the rules, followed by a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2214.
Second.
Now, this particular ordinance is appropriating money in two primary areas, well, three. There for taxes that the city needs to pay on property that it owns. There's also for some community center expenses that we anticipate for supplies. And then we also have some money for internal services for computers. So I'll read through the amounts for each of these. It's $8,000 that we will be paying for the properties that are referred to as the Hope Property. That's up over towards University Estates. The Dowler Property, which is on the south side, and the Columbus Road Property, which is a piece acquired, it's now a vacant piece of land, that we're hoping to utilize in the near future. $4,400 would be for properties we own on Blackburn Road and Central Avenue, and these go through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and so they will be charged to that account. We then have $12,000 of assessments that were made to the community center by the Hawking Conservancy, and these were for improvements made to portions of the river along the community center area. The largest amount of this appropriation tonight is for the community center. It is for $97,000 to Community Center Fund 271. It's for supplies. And I should also mention that it's for utilities and services that the community center is encountering and have need, has need to appropriate this money. And then the last amount is $28,000 to the Internal Services Fund, and this is for purposes of purchasing a computer, a plotter, and a plotter for the city. And I believe that will help us with our GIS.
It'll be a scanner plotter. In many cases, you've seen, well, the map, wherever it is, the zoning map, I guess it's not yet. Again, we still have to work that out. But we need to make larger maps or for displays, as well as to scan some of our larger blueprints. The plotter we have right now is just a plotter, but it's reached the end of its lifespan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Nysley.
Yes.
On the $97,000 and the $12,000, is that just additional expenses with utilities that were unexpected, or?
It's a matter of a budgeting item earlier in the year. You may remember that when we looked at the budget, there were some amounts that were in salary. We had, in effect, a double entry in the amounts for salary for the community center. And if I'm stating this correctly, Mayor Wile, we were faced with thinking, oh, we have to spend, you know, so much money in salaries that we don't have a whole lot of money left in supplies. Let's see how the year goes. When we were able to make that entry then, so we, in a sense, was almost shorting the other supplies and services and utilities funds. And then we were able to make the adjustment last month in one of our appropriation ordinances to correct for that error in the budgeting in the salaries. So we, in a sense, unappropriated certain of the salary monies, and that became available to be able to spend for services and utilities.
The other portion of that, of course, the $12,000 actually goes to, I think you read in the paper, the Margaret Creek Assessment. Basically, the Conservancy, Hawking River Conservancy covers that whole span. So there, obviously, they need money for that, and they've decided, I guess, in the previous, it's been assessed to another portion of the city. In terms of $97,000, we had some of that in the TC-100s, which is personnel. We also had put that into the debt service for the community center. If you remember, we rolled over the debt on that, but because we basically put the money towards the debt, and then pulled it back, we have to appropriate the stuff we pulled back and took out the loan again, as you remember earlier in the year.
Right.
So that's trying to put into play. I did short the community center quite a bit in the budget-making last December, just because there was a large wish list, and I was aware of the fact that it was, I was worried about the revenues coming in. With the idea that we, and again, we'll go back and adjust the other ones that are short or have too much money as time goes on.
Thank you.
I'd like to point out, the Hope-Dowler properties will, they have to go through a process of being declared tax exempt because they're conservation land. So this is not going to be a recurring tax bill on it. And depending on how the auditor, the county auditor dates it, we may get reimbursed for this year, but it kind of depends on how they do it.
And the same will be true for Columbus Road eventually, too, that we'll be submitting papers to file for an exemption for that.
So the papers have to be okayed by the county auditor and such.
The Law Director's office is working on that right now.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 2214. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 2314, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application, to make an application and enter into an agreement for the FY fiscal year 2014-15, Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grant, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I believe this needs to be suspended.
Yes, it does.
Therefore, I move to suspend the rules on ordinance 2314.
Second.
Thank you. The reason for suspension is that the application deadline is mid-April, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
I forget. I think it's not the first, but it's somewhere before the second meeting, yeah.
So we have a request for suspension of the rules, and you comment on suspension only. All those in favor of, we have a motion, I'm sorry, and a second. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2314.
Second.
Thank you. This particular ordinance will essentially allow for a match for our DARE officer, our Drug Abuse Resistance Education Officer, Officer Rick Crossson. He's been on this program for 20 years. The program's been in existence here in Athens for 26 years. Some interesting things to throw out, or at least to mention, is that Officer Crossson has spent over 120 hours in the classroom teaching over 238 6th graders. He's also attended a conference in Cincinnati to update his skills on teaching new violence and safety issues that have come up, as well as new teaching ideas. Something else that's worth mentioning is that it's also afforded him the opportunity to learn how to provide this curriculum to kindergarten through 4th grade, because this is currently only 6th grade. So it's really kind of expanding what he's able to provide in terms of our DARE program.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'd like to comment briefly before the mayor does. I just want to offer my support for this. In years past, I have had the pleasure of being able to present this particular ordinance, and I will support it again. I think we're really lucky to have Officer Rick Crossson in our community and in the schools. So I applaud his hard work and efforts.
Mayor Wile.
He is a good match for the program. Again, it pays for half the salary, which makes it worthwhile. I've attended many of the DARE graduations. I see the emphasis as I'm making good choices. It's just not, you know, drugs are bad for you, but the choices that you make have consequences, and that you should respect yourself. I think it's a good message, for the most part. He's been doing it for many years. So I think it's worth continuing this program.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments on this ordinance? So we do have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 2314. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. We are now at a resolution for first reading. Resolution, this is R0314. A resolution indicating the services the City of Athens will provide for the proposed annexation of approximately 2.2064 acres located on Armitage Road, as requested by the annexation petitioner, and declaring an emergency. This resolution is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm really loath to say this, but I require a suspension. And I hate doing suspensions, being the policy, you know, the process weirdo. However, the timeline that's placed upon the annexation process by the Ohio Revised Code makes it so you cannot do the three readings that you need to do for this particular part of the annexation process. And this is just the first part of the annexation process. It's a multiple-step process, and it has numerous opportunities for citizens to come and have public participation in a public hearing. So that's why I'm asking for a suspension tonight.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension. Is there a second out there?
Second.
Any comments on suspension? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt Resolution 0314.
Second.
This resolution, as I said before, is the first step in order to have the county release the property for annexation. We have to indicate what services the city will provide to that piece of property. And the idea is that the county doesn't want to release a piece of property that's going to be an orphan, and not have necessarily water or other services provided to it. This is a fairly normal list. Upon annexation, the city will provide water service, which is contingent upon the written confirmation that Leax Water will release their water service. And the city has gone through this process before with other pieces of annexation. Sewer service, police, and fire protection. So the property will be treated like the rest of the city when annexed.
So we have a motion and a second to accept ord, I'm sorry, Resolution 0314. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The resolution has been adopted. Okay, we already took care of announcements on other businesses, unless someone had forgotten to include anything. I'm not seeing any sign up. So we are at the point of the meeting in which there's an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Any requests from citizens? Okay, appears that there are none. It is approximately 8:30, 8:31, and we are adjourned. Thank you.